Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for June 9th, 2021 via Zoom. As usual, tonight I would just ask us if we would remember all those that have been affected by this horrible virus and their families, and those on the front lines, doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, all who answer their call of duty unselfishly, and those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, supermarket workers, food servers, just to name a few. And here in our township, our management and administrative staff, public works, all together, keeping our township running. But to support local businesses the best we can, and please don't forget to be generous. Most of all, treat people with kindness and respect, even those you may disagree with. As we start to come out of this pandemic, together as a community, we will be stronger, even stronger when it's over. Also, I ask that tonight, we remember one of our own here in Newtown, Sergeant Frank Ambrose, who passed away recently. A 25-year veteran who served the residents of Newtown with honor and value. Please think of him and his family as we bow our heads. Now, if we recite the pledge allegiance with the board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, any changes or adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. There are two. First off, item 11B1, related to the traffic committee resolution has been removed from the agenda. And item 11C2, police report, will be moved after the first round, our first session of public comment.
Okay, we have no special actions tonight, so we'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a comment of anything that is not on the agenda at the moment, please raise their hand, and I will call them. Okay, I see no hands being raised. So, we'll move on to...
Phil, there's a hand. Terry Christensen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Christensen.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for, for taking the time. I am, I'm wanting to know more about where, how, what, what the standing is on the proposed extension of Newtown Trail along Dollington Road. How, how long can we, how long can we expect before we have some progress there? And how, how firm are those plans?
Okay, is that your comment or your, your questioning right now? This is, this is public comment.
I'll rephrase, I'll rephrase it. It seems that has been on the, that, that, that project has been on the strategic plan for a while, and I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors will act with some alacrity.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing no further public comment, no minor approvals, we go right to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. No committee reports tonight, it looks like, so I'll go to board members' comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My apologies, but we had moved up the police chief's report.
I'm sorry, you're right, Chief. I know you had a long day, so we want to get you out of here as quick as possible.
Thank you, sir. May 2021, police report, we documented 1,847 calls for service. We logged just under 23,000 patrol miles on our vehicles. We had 27 arrests for the month of May, 21 were DUI-related. One for narcotics, two for assaults, one fraud, one traffic fence, and one for forgery. There were eight new cases referred to detectives. There were 56 traffic crashes involving four injuries and 21 non-injuries, only property damage, seven hit runs, and four deer incidents. There were 211 traffic citations issued and 200 warnings issued. We had selected truck enforcement details, both at Stuteville and Eagle, both on 5-5 and one on 5-19, resulting in 21 truck inspections, 11 citations, 13 warnings. Two vehicles were placed out of service and one was towed from the scene. And based on traffic complaints, we also directed patrol for Frost Lane, Saxony Drive, and Park Avenue within the township. Towed on 36.5 hours of dedicated time at 50 separate details, resulting in 41 traffic citations and 11 warnings. For my public service announcements, the police consortium test was given on May 22nd. We are evaluating candidates currently. May 17th was the police memorial at St. Andrews. I want to thank the board members for their attendance, as well as thanking St. Andrews Church for allowing us to use their facility. Little advance notice, Swamp Road will be closing between Worthington Mill and Durham Road for transcontinental national gas pipeline work to be prepared. So, traffic will be diverted between 8-9 and 8-20 this in August. I'm just going to give you advance notice for that. Frauds are continuing. Please, it's a reminder as well to the public, do not give out your personal information over the phone or the internet, particularly to somebody you don't know or somebody that reaches out to you. Also, please do not buy gift cards for anyone you don't know to settle an account, get your grandchild out of trouble, to fix their computer. There are many scams going on out there that are affecting our elderly in the community. So, please speak to your parents or grandparents and your relatives about this to make sure they're not victims. And finally, as you were aware, as you mentioned, Phil, earlier, we laid arrest one of our own officers today, Sergeant Frank Ambrose. Frank passed away on June 4th. He was an active sergeant assigned to the night shift. Frank faithfully served this department for over 25 years, and his loss is being filled by our agency. But rest assured, we will continue his legacy of service to this community. So, on behalf of the Newtown Township Police Department and the family of Sergeant Ambrose, I'd like to personally thank the township manager, board members, department head, staff, and the community for their support, assistance, and attendance at today's funeral for Sergeant Ambrose. Frank's sudden death is a reminder to us all that we will never know when our last day will be, and it take each day as a blessing. The family was very much touched by the showing of unity and support for their family from this community. Additionally, I personally greatly appreciate the camaraderie, concern, and friendship at the numerous Bucks County law enforcement agencies that support at one of our own. Please accept my thanks and appreciation, any and all, and I ask you to keep the family in your thoughts and prayers. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chief. Many questions for the Chief tonight? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving right along on the agenda, again, no committee reports, board members' comments. I'm just going to ask their question. I know Mr. Christensen maybe was unaware of what public comment is, but I, I, I also would like his answer, his question answered if, if maybe Mr. Lewis could in regards to the Dollington Trail.
Sure. As far, as far as the trail goes, there is an item on the agenda this evening to authorize the advertisement for the bidding of the project. Our engineer has put together the bid specs along with all the required documentations to put it out to bid. We had just recently received approval for the NPDES permit, so we're ready to move forward and hopefully we'll receive bids, favorable bids, and we can award the project in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Christensen, I hope that answered your question. Okay, moving on, Vice Chairman, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, everyone. I have two things to report on very quickly. The Joint Zoning Council met last week, and among other things, they discussed the comprehensive plan, and some, they laid out some projected timing for us to get a first draft of the comprehensive plan. They're waiting for some data from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. So, that's probably going to take, they're predicting like another month or so to get that data, and then another couple of months to plug it in, the comprehensive plan where, where it goes. So, looking at a first draft of the comprehensive plan in three or four months, give them some leeway. So, I just thought everybody would be interested in that. One of the other things they discussed at the meeting was the writing, there will be a writing academy ordinance that they're going to pass around in the, in the next couple of months. Then, the only other report that I have is I attended a town hall on the American Recovery Plan on Monday morning. Probably the administration attended as well, but it was, it was, it was good to know they, they did a review of the application process for the American Rescue Plan funding. And it's good to know that our township had already filled the application out and submitted it and got it, got a number that it was in, in process. So, it was, we were a couple of steps ahead. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Mack?
Nothing from me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. Collabor. I want to say, thanks to everyone that came out for the Memorial Day. The Legion went to the cemeteries, as I mentioned in our last meeting, and there was, just through the borough, there were a lot of people on the street. So, I just want to thank everyone in the Borough Police Department for stopping traffic for post 4:40 when we marched through the town. So, just want to say thanks, everybody, for that. It was, it was a good day. For the June 9th BOS meeting, Park and Rec report, check out the variety of weekly summer sports, science, art, culinary camps available now on our website. Full and half-day options are available. For discount code for Six Flags and Crayle the Factory, email recreation@newtownpa.gov. Also, follow Newtownpa.gov, Park and Rec, on social media for updates about programs and park happenings. It's at Newtown Fund. Also, you can register today for the following upcoming programs that are starting soon. There's Voting for Beginners, a neurology camp for teens, BCBA basketball camp, and Taekwondo. And also, please don't forget, pre-registration is required for all of these programs. And you can register at Newtownfund.com or call the Township Office during business hours. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting last week, and the committee is obviously very eager to come to a work session, but I think there's a few things that still need to be ironed out, and I think a little bit more collaborative efforts with the planning commission. So, I know the, our Michelle Fountain will be presenting at the July 6th Planning Commission meeting around some of what she's discovered in terms of how rezoning has been done in other parts of the county. So, looking forward to getting that report before we come before the board, so we make sure that everything is proper and appropriate for recommendations. But that's all I have to report for the Economic Development Committee for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, moving along, we do have a public hearing tonight, and it's for Chopped Creative Salad Company LLC, 2910 South Eagle Road. Conditional use hearing. Is everyone here, Mr. Sander?
Yes, sir. This is a hearing on a conditional use application for, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, Chopped Creative Salad Company LLC. For the record, Chopped is spelled C-H-O-P apostrophe T, so we, not C-H-O-P-P-E-D, like it sounds, but I like to play on words. Before we get started, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mark some board exhibits. Board Exhibit 1 will be the proof of publication of notice of tonight's hearing. Exhibit Board, Board Exhibit 2 will be a photograph depicting the posting of the property with notice of tonight's hearing. Exhibit B3 will be the application itself, which includes a, a plan of the overall village at Newtown, showing the location of the proposed restaurant and a seating chart for that proposed restaurant. And Exhibit B4 will be the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated May 10th, 2021. So, those are the board exhibits for this hearing. I do know that we have Mr. Blackburn present. Mr. Blackburn represents the applicant this evening, and unless you have any additional preliminaries, Mr. Chairman, we should turn it over to Mr. Blackburn.
Okay, Mr. Blackburn, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Joe Blackburn from Whistle Pearlstein, here on behalf of the applicant, Chopped Creative Salad Company LLC, with respect to its application concerning the approximately 2,500 square foot tenant space located at 2910 South Eagle Road. Do I have the capability of sharing my screen briefly? If not, could I possibly be granted that privilege, Mr. Lewis?
We can make you a co-host.
I know you want to say no, but that's a... Great. For purposes of orientation, the subject property is the southern end cap of what is Retail Building Number 9, which is in the northwest quadrant, if you will, just north of West Road. As I stated, the subject premises consist of 2,500 square feet, within which the applicant proposes an E5/E6 eating place use known as Chopped Creative Salad Company. Chopped operates an eating place that serves salads and salads and bowls marketed as global street food. Chopped currently has 65 locations up and down the East Coast, the majority of which are located in New York, but which stretch as far south as Alabama.
Mr. Blackburn, can I, can I just interrupt you for a second?
For some of us who are direction-challenged, could you explain exactly where it's near, what other businesses it's near? Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, the southern end cap of Retail 9, so West Road, you've got McCafferty's directly across West Road, Alta, Iron Hill, Bomba, which is currently being fit up now, Maud, Chipotle, and then Solstice. And, you know, here you've got the former salad works. So, Eagle Road or Durham Road, I guess, whatever, wherever the break is to the north.
Thank you very much. I, I think we get the logistics. You don't have to mention every, every business.
I'll keep going until you tell me. But in any event, this would be the first location in the Commonwealth, which Chopped is obviously very excited about. We are in receipt of the Township Planner's Review Letter dated May 10th, which accurately summarizes the operational components of the use. Adding a little additional color or character to that review, I would add that the, the deliveries would be expected to be via a small box truck two to three times a week. Chopped has the advantage of being candidly the most proximate tenant space to the loading, loading docks, which are here, as depicted on the plan, the approved subdivision plan. With the addition of this square footage, the total restaurant percentage within the, the shopping center would be brought up to 31.18%. That has been an ongoing tally that the board has been monitoring. You'll recall that as part of the underlying approvals, we were capped at a total of 45% of the total square footage of the building area. Again, inclusive of Chopped and its outdoor seating area, we would be brought up to 31.18%, so still well shy of that 45%. The one other comment in Ms. Fountain's review letter that I would, I would address is the suggestion that the seating area proposed as a part of this use is located on the sidewalk. That was a misunderstanding, which I can explain. As you'll see on the, the floor plan, there is obviously some outdoor seating. 50 indoor seats, 30, 36 outdoor seasonal seats. As you can see, those outdoor seats are proposed in this paved area. For whatever reason, this area has not been paved. Although you can see on the approved subdivision or land development plan, it is clearly depicted that this whole area would be paved. The paving stops about here, if you will, on the plan, such that when reviewing the plan, Ms. Fountain, understandably, thought that the seats were going to be in this area, which is where the ADA ramp is for the crossing across West Road. That is not the case. They, the seating would be from, from approximately this point back or to the west. That area, as you can see on this image, is, again, for whatever reason, has not been paved yet. So, it would be additional paving. It was paving that was, or impervious coverage that was approved as a part of the underlying plan. Why it was not installed initially, I cannot say. Perhaps in the thought that it might not be a resident or a restaurant use that would necessitate the outdoor seating. But in any event, this area that you're seeing here, which consists of a little flower bed and some grassed area, would be paved and would be the area where the outdoor seating would be held. So, obviously not in any way conflicting with the ADA ramp, which you see here in the forefront of this image, or the sidewalk system at all. There is no sidewalk on the north side of West Road. So, again, this would not be a continuation of any sidewalk. The sidewalk is exclusively on the south side of West Road. So, again, that's just one clarification that we wanted to offer, rightfully so raised by, by Ms. Fountain, but perhaps a product of, of the plan not yet being fully implemented. We understood and heard also from the Planning Commission some questions about what the facade of this building would look like. I can tell you that the, the two bay doors depicted on this image here would be outfitted with, you know, glass features, and the, the third one furthest to the west would be eliminated, such that you would not see these, you know, stark white panels, garage door-looking panels. That's simply a product of the fact that it's currently vacant. So, that's certainly not going to be the look of, the look of the, the building most immediately facing West Road once completed. Obviously, we also heard the, the standard refrain about parking. As the, the board is well aware, the parking was granted as a part of the underlying approval. I can dust off my, my common refrain. I know it's been a while since we've had a restaurant conditional use, given the pandemic, but, you know, we have extensive parking that has been installed. The, the, the underlying metrics from that calculation remain intact. Are you going to be able to find a, a space in the front row on a busy Friday night? Probably not. But we maintain, and I personally, as I'm sure members of this board, are driving through or patronizing the shopping center on a regular basis, myself at least, at least once a day, and I've never been unable to find parking. Am I able to find it in the front row? Not, not often. Are you going to have to walk across a couple of rows? Probably. But the suggestion that there is insufficient parking, I think, is, is belied by just a, you know, a visit to the center itself. So, I am joined tonight by Justin Gould from the applicant. And with that introduction, I can make either myself and/or Mr. Gould available, I guess. Technically, why don't we have Justin sworn in really quickly, if we could, Ms. Augusta?
Sorry, Justin, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I affirm.
And Justin, you heard, Justin, you heard the, the brief narrative that I just gave to the board?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Was everything in that true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
True and correct. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the board, we're happy to, to answer at this time.
Well, first, why don't Mr. Gould go over what his operation will entail and let the public know what they could be looking for in the future? So, Mr. Gould, if you'd like to explain what you would be doing at Chopped?
Sure. Well, Chopped started back in 2001, when salad wasn't a, a main component of, of the meal. And we were doing something new and bold, and we continue to do that today, where we offer great fresh options for, for lunch, dinner, and everywhere in between. So, we offer fresh chopped salads and 18 homemade dressings you can get on your salad. And we also offer a suite of warm bowls, so cauliflower rice or grain, for, for whatever your heart desires, free to lunch or dinner. As an operation, as Joe mentioned, we have about 50 seats interior and a few exterior seats to support the operation. Typically, we have a higher volume during lunch than during dinner, and a shoulder period in between. We have about 12 employees that will be managing the shift throughout. And as part of our operation, everything is fresh produce. So, we all bring in fresh produce at the back door and prep everything for that day's service only, and we start again the next day. That was great operation. Go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Finish off. I apologize.
No, just going to say, we've been doing this, as you mentioned, from Connecticut to Alabama. We're thrilled to be excited to bring this to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And this being the first spot, we can't wait.
And I would add that, as I'm sure members of the board may be aware, there is, or was, rather, another salad, well, the salad works within the shopping center, which is, is no longer. So, this would be filling that need, if you will, for, you know, that, that healthy salad alternative dining choice would not be, you know, duplicative in any manner, but would rather be filling that void that's been created by the vacancy of the salad works.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Making Newtown a little bit healthier as we go along. That sounds great. Mr. Mr. Blackburn, I guess the, the one thing that you, you forgot to mention is no outside music, correct?
That is correct. Yes. So, that would be a presumed stipulation if the board were inclined to any approval. We're, we're well aware of that. And yes, I, I'm, I remembered a lot of the things that were pretty commonplace about a year ago, and we were doing these more regularly at my last appearance before the planning commission. So, yes, no, no outdoor amplified music of any sort, yeah. Nor of the spoken word.
Excellent. Questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. Talking about the outside music, I think the ordinance or whatever it is specifies no outdoor speakers. Is that correct?
I, I, I'm not certain. If, without, without speakers, we're not, obviously, I mean, if we're not amplifying anything outdoors, we're not going to have the speakers, so...
I know that the, I know that the Starbucks has outdoor speakers. I don't know if they use them, but that doesn't seem, I have to check up on whether that's permitted or not, even without being used.
I, I don't, I, I'm not certain. I'm sorry.
Okay. The other questions I had, sorry, Mr. Chairman?
No, I was going to just ask if Mr. Sander could check on that. Maybe that's something he could, in regards to speakers.
Certainly.
Go ahead.
Right. You, you never know when somebody's going to sneak in some music. They have speakers outside. In any case, I had questions about the seating outdoors. You know, there's traffic, I guess it's called, what's it called, West Road or?
Yes.
Going by McCafferty's. And I know there's a speed bump there that might tend to slow down the traffic. But is there any way, any plan to put, what do you call them, bollards or things like that, to protect people who might be sitting out there?
Yeah, so, fair question. We do have, and, and you'll note that there is a little bit of a grade change here. So, if you envision this, if you envision this elevation kind of continuing, the, the seating would be elevated probably 18 inches to two feet above the travel lane. I would also note that it is set back... eighteen inches to two feet above the travel lane. Uh, I would also note that it is set back um approximately two feet from the curb. So it's not as if these seats are on the curb. Now, having said that, yes, there would be uh protective fencing uh installed in the general vicinity of this black line. Um, and to the extent that the fencing along, you know, immediately a budding West Road needed to be some sort of uh reinforced or more durable, then that certainly would be an acceptable condition. Um, uh, if the board were so inclined, then.
I I know that.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, I I know that that fencing was also going to be in other places, so but in the parking lot, which, you know, I hope is adequate, so uh, I guess that would work.
As a part of the uh permit submission for the, you know, expanded outdoor patio area, um, my understanding is there are, there is uh fencing proposed. And again, if if it given the setback from the travel lane and the height elevation, um, I I would think that, you know, bollards on top of that may not be necessary. But again, if the board were so inclined, that's uh certainly not an unreasonable request, I wouldn't think.
Well, I don't know. I've seen videos on YouTube of cars flying into the second floor of houses, so anything is possible, I guess. But um uh, now, when are deliveries, deliveries are made uh before business hours, I guess?
Correct, yeah, off peak hours. Um, you know, you heard Mr. Gould talk about the the freshness of their produce, so they would obviously have, uh, as I alluded to, um uh several deliveries a week. Um, but uh, we've committed as a part of all the uh the the restaurant uses to um, work around peak hours and candidly with each other, uh, right? Because, you know, they're gonna have to coordinate with Iron Hill, with um, you know, Alta for that matter, on um scheduling their deliveries. So that's something that's gonna be done more on a macro level, candidly, probably through Bricksmore, uh, the landlord. Um, but yes, they would certainly be off peak hours, yes.
Right, because I I wouldn't want those people sitting out there breathing in truck fumes as they deliver goods around the corner. I guess that's where the back of the store is anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know you uh I tired of he- hearing the standard refrain about parking, but can you tell me how many parking spaces there are in that particular lot over there?
Um.
You're gonna do an estimate. I I think I estimated about two hundred. Is that about right?
I believe it's two hundred and forty-two. Um, and I can
Okay.
Two forty-two is what the plan that I had up a moment ago shows, I believe. Yeah.
And you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of restaurants there with ten to fifteen uh employees. I don't know how many restaurants are there right now or planned, at least five, I would say. Um, so you have, you know, maybe fifty employees parking their cars probably in that location. Wasn't there some mention of some other uh area of parking that may be accessible? Maybe not to customers, but for employees? I don't know, behind McCaffrey's or something like that?
Yeah, there are. Let me pull up the plan again. I apologize. I should just keep it up. Um, a moment, please. Um, yeah, so there is uh parking behind McCaffrey's. I apologize that that this, it's for some reason, a little grayed out in this area. Um, but there there has been substantial parking behind McCaffrey's. Um, but uh, the 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 restaurants and and candidly, all the tenants have been, as I understand it, um, you know, directing employees to park not only in those, you know, designated employee areas to the extent possible, um, but also in the furthest reaches of not only uh what I'll call the northwest quadrant, but also the the southwest quadrant, the the McCaffrey's, for lack of a better designation law. So you you will see, um, you know, employees parking around the perimeter uh to the extent that they're not able to be accommodated down here behind McCaffrey's, yes.
Uh, and I suppose McCaffrey's would not be happy with them parking in their lot right across the street, so uh, I hope they tell them about that. Um, speaking about the percentage of uh square footage for dedicated to these types of uh uses restaurants, I guess you would call it. Um, there's still substantial uh square footage that could be uh dedicated up to forty-five percent. Maybe you won't be able to go all the way up to that, but uh, somebody asked me about McCaffrey's uh has a little dining area. Is that included in your percentage calculation?
I do not believe it is, no.
Because it was mentioned to me that they have a a liquor permit and they have to have a eating area. It doesn't qualify for that. Uh, it doesn't qualify to be in your percentage calculation. It's a small space.
Yeah, um, but to my knowledge, it's not included. Um, that is a different, the the McCaffrey's use, notwithstanding some of its component uses, is not an E-five or E-six eating place use. And the the restriction, uh, as I recall, was limited to forty-five percent um of the the E-five restaurant uses, so would not uh seem to qualify for that. Um, happy to look at that, um, you know, with Mr. Sander, uh, and and, you know, clarify, uh, if the board is of a mind, uh, to do that, yeah.
I'm sure it doesn't make a really big difference. It's a pretty small space anyway. Just curious, um. I think that's basically uh all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Blackburn, just to uh piggyback on what Mr. Mack has said in regards to uh the indoor services at McCaffrey's, um, as you know, we have a big vacant building, Pier One, that i- i- if someone were to occupy that, say, another business like Pier One and sectioned off, say, a thousand square feet for an eatery inside, you're telling me that that will be calculated in the square square footage percentage of of the eating calculation?
Uh, well, if it was a restaurant, then it certainly would be. I mean, I I can't, I have no idea, in all honesty, what if anything is, I'm sure they're trying to lease it out, but I've received no indication of what, if anything, is in the works for that space. Um, if it were a restaurant, an E-five or an E-six use, then absolutely it would be included. I'm just saying that the McCaffrey's use as classified by the zoning ordinance is not an E-five or E-six eating place use. It is a whatever a grocery store use is, probably a E-retail something, E-ten or something use. Um, and as such, it would not be included in that that calculation.
Yes, yeah, I I thought it was. Uh, I thought, hearing it was at one time in the calculations, uh, just from the fact that people do take their food out. They get it, take it out, they could sit down and eat it, but um, it's almost like a multi-use uh attached to a grocery store, but w- w- we don't have to, we don't have to get into the details on this. Um, Mr. Sander, I guess you could check on that one, too. You put that in your, on your pad there. We we could check that.
Absolutely.
Uh, just to go back to uh a a question for Mr. Gould, you had mentioned, how how many employees would be uh on site or how many at a shift at a time?
Yes, so we have, we'll have twelve employees, uh, really a total no more than that. That'll be our peak shift, which would be the lunchtime, and it'll be significantly less than that during dinner. We're we're mostly lunchtime crap for salads.
Okay, so un- unlike um salad works, which was basically a uh you got it, sat down, you're, these, these are gonna be servers that are going to serve the people at the tables?
So it's still a fast, what I would call a fast casual restaurant. So you'll order at the counter, but your salad is made to order fresh right in front of you. Uh, so we'll have some folks doing that, mixing your salad, bringing you up, and then we'll have other folks in the back of house continuing to prep fresh products for the next shift.
And y- you're gonna be right next to Alta, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that, is that where you're gonna be? Uh, I I'm not, and I'm sure Alta sells uh the healthiest uh uh makeup products in the world, but is there any, any danger of any kind of toxic uh, you know, elements that may, you know, not not jump through the walls, but hey, there could be a delivery or something. I mean, just just wondering if there is it's safe on that aspect?
Yeah, I I would say completely. Between the spaces, we'll have a two-hour fire rating uh that will completely separate us from any neighboring tenant, Alta, or anybody else. Um, as far as delivery goes, deliveries go, everything is, you know, comes in self-contained for chopped for us. We have a thorough process where we wash all of our vegetables completely before they're chopped for salads. Uh, so I have complete confidence that there would be no crossover or anything, as you mentioned.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, any, anyone else have uh questions?
Dennis? Yes, I did. Uh, John actually uh covered the my concern. And I just wanted to, a- and and that was about the closeness of the outdoor eating to the to West Road. Uh, a- and I accept, I accept the answers. Uh, in terms of barrier, I would, I would support a condition that if the uh proposed barrier was not enough, that we would come back to the drawing board on that.
Certainly.
Other, other than that, I I eat a salad every day. I like the concept. And thank you. Welcome.
Excellent. Mr. Davis, anything?
No, nothing. I'm I'm glad you guys are coming. Welcome to Newtown. Hopefully this goes through. I still think we overpacked that shopping center. That's why I voted no on it, is the parking sucks.
Uh, Mr. Oxley, anything?
Uh, just one question, Mr. Blackburn. Um, for the outs- outdoor seating, um, you alluded to three bay windows. The third one that's on the end, is that where the door will be to for patrons to go out to utilize that space? Or or would the more be more than one door? Um, let me pull up one more. Sorry, I got too many windows open here. I apologize. So, um, this is a, if you will, a a facade drawing of the, what is this, what will be the southern-facing facade? Um, you can see that two of those bay doors that are depicted um here on this, you know, just kind of boarded up areas. Two of those will will be, you know, outfitted with glass, one of which will have a door to access that outdoor area, and the the westernmost would be, um, you know, converted and and be, you know, just flat facade. So yes, there would be an interior-exterior point of egress directly from the inside uh to the outdoor eating area. So right in that middle bay door, if you will. Okay, all right. Um, no, that's all I had. I was just curious about how patrons getting out to eat. But um, no, I think it's great. Love the fact that, you know, we have all these new small businesses coming into Newtown. And um, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Sander, how do we proceed from here?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would um like to frame a motion, uh, if that's okay. Uh, at which time, um, we could certainly have board discussion on the motion itself, and then we would request public comment uh on the uh motion prior to it being acted on. Uh, so if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of Chopped Creative Salad Company LLC for a conditional use for an E-five eating place and E-six eating place drive-in restaurant to be located at twenty-nine ten South Eagle Road in the Village at Newtown Shopping Center, Building Nine, Lot One. Proposed restaurant is designed to occupy approximately two thousand five hundred square feet in a new building that is part of the previously approved Bricksmore Development. All site improvements will be part of the overall Bricksmore Development as previously constructed, inspected, and approved. Approval is conditioned on the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Two, the hours of operation shall be nine AM to ten thirty PM, seven days a week. Three, there shall be a maximum of twelve employees on any one shift. Four, there will be no hazardous, flammable, or explosive material stored or utilized in the building. Should this condition change, the applicant must immediately notify the township of the nature of any such dangerous materials, how they will be stored and or utilized, and how they will be rendered safe. Five, deliveries will be staggered in time to avoid peak work or shopping hours and coordinated with the other retail stores nearby to avoid waiting for unloading and congestion with other traffic in the area. The size of the delivery vehicles will be in keeping with the ability of the delivery area to handle these vehicles quickly and safely. Six, no noxious uh or hazardous impacts shall be generated by this use. However, if that should change, uh, it is the applicant's obligation to notify the township of any such environmental impact existing at the restaurant and its plans for mitigating and or removing same to render the use safe for its intended public purpose as a restaurant. Seven, the finished construction and function of the use shall be ADA compliant. Eight, all fees and costs due to township must be paid in full by the applicant prior to the issuance of a use and occupancy permit for the use. Nine, approval of the wastewater removal plan must be provided in writing from the Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority. Ten, all signage must be acceptable to the Board of Supervisors and approved by the zoning hearing board if required. Eleven, there will be no outdoor sound system. Twelve, arrangements for trash removal must be acceptable to the township. Thirteen, should sound buffering be required due to the outdoor dining, a plan must be submitted to the township when requested and approved by the Board of Supervisors. Fourteen, the south elevation closest to West Road currently shows three large white panels. Applicant shall replace these panels with glass walls with at least one of these walls providing a door for passage from inside the restaurant to the outside dining area. Fifteen, the current plan does not have a roof or any structure over the outdoor dining area. Uh, applicant represents that none is proposed at this time and understands that if this should change and some form of covering be desired at a later date, a separate application to the township will be required. And finally, a fence or other preventive, protective uh barrier shall be erected by the applicant to protect the outdoor seating area if such is determined to be necessary by the township. And that is the entirety of the motion, Mr. Chairman.
It it's uh, everything acceptable, Mr. Blackburn?
Yeah, um, I would, just one clarification I would make or offer um with respect to the bay doors. Uh, two of the three will be replaced with the the glass windows. Um, the image that we had showed had the the furthest west one um being uh siding. I guess I I can offer that as an exhibit, probably should, um, and move it into the record, but uh if that's acceptable, just in conformance with the um facade rendering that was offered.
Okay, I'll I'll adjust that to read. Uh, the south elevation closest to West Road currently shows three large white panels. Applicants shall replace two of the three of the, two of the three of these panels with glass walls with at least one of those walls providing a door for passage from inside the restaurant to the outside dining area.
That would be acceptable, then, as written. Thank you.
Hey, uh, do I have such a motion?
I'm moving.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Uh, any further questions from the board on this?
Um, yeah, you mentioned that the uh, Mr. Sanders, you mentioned that um uh, the board would uh might request certain things like if the fencing were not adequate around the uh um, uh, outdoor eating area. Uh, when would that occur? Is this, uh, uh, let me understand the process. So we still have an opportunity under land development or something to get back to that?
No, sir. This is, uh, land development is long since completed. Um, it it would be, well, first of all, I think the testimony uh was that there will be a a fence proposed or a or a barrier there that is is proposed. If it's not adequate, the township can then ask the applicant to make revisions to that as part of compliance with the conditions of this conditional use. But this is not a land development matter.
How how do we know if it's adequate or not?
That'll be your, that'll be your judgment call.
So I could go there and look at the fence and say, I think this is adequate or not adequate, and if it's not adequate, I can come before the Board of Supervisors and If it's not adequate, I can come before the Board of Supervisors and ask that we request further protection for that area. Is that how it works?
Yes. If a majority of the Board of Supervisors decides that there would be, there should be an additional protective barrier there, then this condition requires the applicant to install it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I'm going to ask a question in regards to Mr. Max's concern. I guess safety is, you know, we want to make sure that the patrons are safe. John, what kind of barrier were you thinking of? Maybe that's something we could take care of now if it's okay with Mr. Blackburn and Mr. Gold and not have to revisit this issue.
I forget what they're called, the bollards, the things that stick up?
They're called bollards. B O L L A R D S. They are concrete posts that that stick up that are designed to prevent, obviously, vehicles from crashing into things.
Is there something that would be considered?
We would, I would, the only thing I would add to Mr. Sanders' response would be that we would have to submit building permit drawings or some sort of permit drawings for the expansion of the outdoor area. We talked about, you know, the additional concrete going in and for the interior fit out. So there would be the opportunity to review those plans as a part of, maybe not necessarily the board, but the codes department would have the opportunity to review those plans. And if they thought that, or the board thought after receiving those plans, that what was proposed was inadequate, then there would certainly be the opportunity to amend those even before they go in. So I would suggest that that be the protocol as opposed to, you know, maybe over over designing something at this point. Again, we do have a few foot of a separation between the curb and the outdoor seating area. We also have the height elevation difference. So with those and the, you know, fencing that's proposed, our hope is that the codes department candidly would find those sufficient. And if not, then, yes, we would, we would absolutely, you know, the patron safety is paramount to the proprietor, obviously. So you probably wouldn't even have to ask. They'd probably do it on their own, I'm sure. But there is another kind of review step, or maybe not by the board itself, I would say.
Let me ask you this. You mentioned elevation, and last I looked there, that ADA ramp is pretty elevated. There's a concrete slab there. Would it be even with that slab?
Yeah, absolutely. In the image that I showed you, you saw the elevation of that concrete slab at the top of that ADA ramp, and it would be a continuation at that elevation. So again, it's probably looking at 18 inches to 24 to two feet above the travel lane. That slab is even laid. And then you've got the separation as well and the fence on top of it. I think that would probably, you know, barring the car flying into the second story of a house, you know, scenario. You know, hopefully that's sufficient. But again, if it's not, then...
It happens. But I'm glad to know that. I didn't realize that it would be at that level. I thought it might be at the level of the grass there. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks. Appreciate your cooperation on that. Mr. Sanders, did I miss it? Maybe I did. Did you mention the hours of operation?
I did, Mr. Chairman. I'll repeat them. The hours of operation will be 9:00 AM to 10:30 PM, seven days a week.
Okay. Are those hours sufficient? Do you ever see them maybe changing? Because the reason I asked is if you change the hours of operation, say you want to open up 8 o'clock in the morning and close 11 o'clock, and you'd have to come before the Board of Supervisors again. So this, this is a chance to, you could ask to be open 24 hours a day, not that you would be permitted to. But this would, this would give you the chance to extend your hours if you have, if you think that they may adjust. But if not, then we could keep these hours the way they are.
I'll say, and I'll let Justin respond then as well, but there's the customary, the one thing I did remember from our last go around, you know, years ago, was to build in a little fluff there, if you will. But Justin, if you'd like to, you know, expand even further, I mean, I know your 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 prime time is lunch. So I'll defer to you. Additional expansion of those hours will be warranted or necessary at all.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Mr. Chair. Those hours would cover everything we would possibly want to do with salads. So I'm happy to keep them at 9:00 AM to 10:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any any further questions from the board on this motion? Any questions from the public on this motion? Okay, seeing none. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? This is 5-0. Welcome to Newtown, Mr. Gold.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
And that concludes the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, moving right along, we're to reports of officials, engineers report.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is the Lower Dolington Road Multi-Use Trail Authorization Advertise. Mr. Lewis accurately summarized the status of the project earlier in this meeting. We recently received on the permit necessary. So the design plans are complete. So tonight, we're seeking authorization to formally bid out that project to receive bids from different contractors.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to authorize to advertise a Dolington Road multi-use trail. Do I have such a motion? So moved. That was second.
Second.
Yeah, motion in second. Any questions from the board on this?
Yes, if I might, I know the status has been gone over, but I'm also interested in the timeline. Maybe you could give us a little bit more information on that, Leanna. You haven't, once you get this authorization, you're going to advertise it. What does that mean? You're looking for a bid, I imagine?
Yep, so, yep, that's correct. So basically, with every, with every project like this, we authorize bidders to bid on the project. So we place the advertisement, we place the bid package up on PennBid, which is an electronic procureware site, which is open to hundreds of contractors, and they review the bids, and then they will submit their bids. I anticipate, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
I anticipate early July that we would have, the bids would be closed, and hopefully at one of the meetings in July, that we would be able to discuss the bids that were received.
Is that you give 30 days to, for the bidding process to go work through? Is that correct?
That the bidding time can fluctuate. Basically, there's requirements between the advertisements that we have to meet. So there's a few days between both advertisements, and then the bid has to be open for an absolute minimum of 10 days following that second advertisement. That's a pretty short window, so I like to give bidders a little bit more time on that. So that sort of brings us to the beginning of July.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board on this? Any questions from the public on the motion to advertise? Okay, seeing none. I have a question. Do I hear something? Seeing no questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? This is 5-0.
Thank you. Next item that we have is change order number one for the 2021 Look of Fuels Road Program. We discussed this a few meetings back, but basically, just to summarize, we awarded this project with several streets included in the base bid. Township was made aware of some possible issues with the work that the Sewer Authority had done. So we decided at that point to remove those streets from the base bid. This had to formally be done following execution of the contracts with the contractor, so that has been complete. So here we are with change order number one. So we recommend approval of this change order. And this removes the streets in those neighborhoods from the contract.
So I guess we need a motion for the 2021 Look of Fuels Road Program Change Order Number One. Do I have such a motion?
Make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. From what I understand, this has been taken care of with the Sewer Authority, a settlement with the contractor that was out there prior. Is that, is that true?
I'm not aware of the status. I'm not sure, Mr. Lewis, if you have.
I see Mr. Shankman's on here. I believe he's the chairman of the Sewer Authority Committee. I don't know if you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Chairman. The issues we've been having with the contractor seem to be resolved. We just reached a settlement with the contractor. We have not seen the releases yet that they're being drafted at this point, but they should be ready in the next week or so. And we're satisfied with the result of that resolution. It just may take a little bit longer, because at this point, we have to, probably will have to re-bid everything to get the work done.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions in regards to this motion?
I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Fisher.
I noticed, this is not, this comes as no surprise to the contractor. I actually noticed on the change order that there were a couple of, at least tentative signatures on there already. So and I just wanted to make sure that my impression was correct, that the contractor already knows that this is coming.
Yep, they were, they were made aware before we even awarded the contract, just to make sure that everyone was okay with the scope of work. So this sort of just formalizes that that discussion with them.
Mr. Mack, you had a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. Leanna, can you remind me again of what, how many miles of roads now will be paid due to this change order?
I don't have that number in front of me. I could pull it up really quickly. I apologize. It was around two and a half prior to these streets. I could get that number for you. I apologize. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, it's somewhere, it's less than two and a half, probably.
Correct, yeah. I want to approximate one and a half, but I, I'll confirm that for you.
Okay, that would be interesting. The other thing people were asking about was the schedule of the other roads that remain on this list. Do you have any idea? I guess that has to be worked out with the Public Works Department in terms of when that schedule will be available.
Right. We're having the pre-construction meeting next week, and the contractor will give us their schedule at that point. And then we will provide that to the Public Works Department, and typically that gets posted on the township website.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Lewis, when you get that schedule, would you mind sharing it with the board via email? Or whomever is responsible for it? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further questions from the board on this issue? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? This is 5-0.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item on the report, the Juneteenth Resolution. At its last meeting, the board authorized our office to prepare a resolution designating June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day in Newtown Township. We have prepared that resolution, and it is before the board for action. If the board is of a mind, it would require a motion to adopt the resolution designating June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day in Newtown Township.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Oxley, since this was your resolution, so to speak, I don't know if you would like to read it. I know it's brief, but I don't know if you want to to read it for the public record.
Yes, that would be fine. Bear with me one second, Mr. Chairman. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, designated June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day in Newtown Township. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the oldest commemoration commemoration of African-American economic liberation in the United States. And whereas the last people legally enslaved in Bucks County were freed from slavery in 1824 into indentured servitude for decades longer. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1, 1863, freeing enslaved people in the South. However, Southern slave owners ignored the order. On June 19, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and enforced the President's order, freeing the slaves two and a half years after emancipation was first decreed. This day has since become known as Juneteenth. And whereas through our systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, and mass incarceration, true equality has yet to be realized for African-Americans. And whereas today, African-Americans face inequities in our judicial system, medical system, employment, and housing as a lingering effects of enslavement and racism. And whereas Juneteenth was recognized as a state holiday in Pennsylvania on June 19, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved, this day, this ninth day of June 2021, that the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors adopts this resolution and designates June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day. Newtown Township recognizes the historical significance of Juneteenth Freedom Day to Newtown Township and supports the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences of the African-American community that have shaped the United States and to rededicate ourselves to work toward freedom and equality for all. Resolve this day, ninth, this ninth day of June 2021.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? This is 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $4,652,141. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. I have one item under my reports for the board's consideration. It's the consideration to sell two used lawn mowers. There's a 2003 John Deere and a 2007 Grasshopper. We had replaced several mowers with new mowers this year and subsequently last year. And these require too much maintenance, and they have too many hours on them that are, they're no longer viable, and they're sort of taking up space in the shop. So the board is of a mind, entertain a motion to authorize the sale of the used equipment outlined in the Public Works Director's memo.
Have such a motion?
Moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board? From the public on this motion? Seeing none, I call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? This is 5-0. Mr. Lewis, you had, did you say that the general fund is 4 million some odd hundred thousand?
Yes, 4,652,141.
Being that's a very large amount, is there a reason to, what did we get in that would have this general fund so large?
Well, we got in the real estate tax money revenue, and we also... Well, we, we got in the real estate, uh, tax money revenue, and we also got the, uh, May distribution of earned income tax. If you recall, typically, there's four quarters in the year where we get large distributions of, of earned income tax, because employers file quarterly. Um, May is one of them, uh, and we did see a, a decent return on the EIT, uh, for last month.
Excellent, thank you. I, I have a question in regards to, I know we were talking about roads and paving and so on, but, but in the interim, uh, we know that, uh, some of our roads took a beating during the, uh, winter months with the snow, and there's some, uh, potholes here, potholes there. Uh, if a, um, a, a resident were to, to notice a pothole and wanted to report it, uh, how would they go about it? So this way they could, um, let the Public Works Department know. If, if you would just go over that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, there's two, two ways. Uh, easiest way is to call the Public Works Department. Uh, somebody there will answer it or leave a message, and, uh, where, where the pothole is located, and we can make a note of it, and we'll put it on the list for repair. Uh, second way is to go on to the township website under the Public Works Department uh, page, and there's a reported concern, uh, link at that location where you can uh, send in an email. It's a form that asks for your, you know, name, address, where, what the concern is, and, uh, it can be reported that way.
Great. Well, also, uh, just to let the public know that all our street lights are numbered, correct?
That's correct.
And that if there is one out in their neighborhood on their street, all they have to do is, again, either call Public Works, send an email with that particular number, letting, letting them know that this light is out, so that it has to be repaired. So this, it doesn't stay, uh, it doesn't stay dark for a long time. They can report that particular number on the, uh, on the streetlight.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Um, bills lists, minutes, bills lists, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes of the May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting.
I have a motion, I have a second.
So moved.
I motion second. Uh, any questions from the board on the minutes? From the public? Seeing none, a couple of questions, all those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Any opposed? This is five zero.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, approve our bills list, uh, totaling two, to pay our bills totaling two hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I have motion, do I have a second? Second. Motion, second. Any questions from the board on the bills list? From the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all those in favor? I, any, any opposed? This is five zero.
And, uh, finally, I make a motion that we do the interfund transfers totaling two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Uh, motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Motion, second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? This is five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Uh, we're in our second session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a public comment, uh, raise your hand. I will call on you. I see, Mr. DiApril, John?
Hello, how you guys doing? Um, since everything is open now, the restaurants and everything, uh, the COVID scare, uh, is, uh, going away, I guess your next meeting is going to be live, correct?
I think it's a good possibility, John. I would say yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um. Oh, that's all right. Uh, nothing else. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh, any, any other public comment? Okay, I guess it moves us into, uh, old business, and, uh, as, uh, Mr. DiApril basically led us into old business, uh, are, uh, typically in the summer months, we do, um, cancel the last meetings of each month of June, July, and August due to a light, uh, agenda. Mr. Lewis, do you foresee a light agenda for the end of June?
At this time, yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Okay, then we'll consider July, when we get to July, and so on, so on. But, uh, in regards to a live meeting, um, I, I, I feel that things have, have loosened up. Uh, we could probably go back to a live meeting, the first meeting of July, naturally with, um, some safe distances as, as it was set up, uh, prior to us not showing up. Uh, I will, uh, poll the board here to see if everyone is okay with a, uh, a live meeting in July. Uh, Mr. Fisher, I'll go to you first.
I'm fine with a, uh, in-person meeting in July.
Mr. Mack?
Uh, I'm fine with a live meeting, and I hope that, uh, we can somehow combine that with, uh, remote access, uh, which I was at a, uh, seminar today presented by, uh, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, a presentation was made by the Middletown, uh, Assistant Manager about how they run a hybrid, uh, face-to-face and virtual meetings. And they found that this was a very good way of getting the maximum number of residents to be able to participate.
Okay, I guess that's something that, uh, Video Gold can research for us. Uh, Mr. Davis?
I'm on board. Let's do it in person.
Gotcha. Mr. Oxley?
Looking forward to seeing you all.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Lewis, you have our direction. Get that, uh, room all spiffy for us, so, uh, we can meet in public. Okay. Yes. Uh, any, any, any other old business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I like to bring up, um, the idea of starting a budget process earlier again, especially with this COVID funds that we're looking at getting.
Hey.
Just wanted to bring that up again.
What, uh, what would your suggestion be? When would you like to see it?
I'd like to see you start the process earlier, rather than wait and cradle it into the end of the year. Uh, starting soon as possible, actually.
Mr. Lewis, I'll, I'll just ask you, I mean, are, are you in the process of starting? I know that, uh, that the budget is like something that's worked on constantly. I mean, are you, are you okay with starting it early?
Uh, yes, um, as of right now, we're sort of working through each department, uh, figuring out what would be included in the capital plan. Uh, we're setting up the framework of the twenty twenty-two budget, uh, as far as the spreadsheets and the, and the structure of it goes. Um, other than that, we haven't really made any projections, uh, as far as revenues expenditures go, because we, we are not even effort through the year yet, so that's that's where.
But it's, it's, uh, something that you could give us, uh, you know, I'm not saying a full report, but preliminarily work on uh, the budget as, as we go along from this between on.
Yeah, I can probably provide on paper.
It, it's the, given the nature of the budget, we all, we all know it's pretty complex, and it's going to be more complex this year with this other variable. I just like more time to be able to digest it and figure out what's going on with it before, you know, it, we have to quick boat on it at the end of the year. That's, that's mainly what I'm saying.
Yeah, good idea.
Having sit, sit, having sat into a number of finance committee meetings, I, I think they would support the same, support that as well.
Okay, excellent. Uh, any other old business anyone can take up?
Uh, yes, I do. I almost forgot. We have two appointments that I'd like to offer to the board for approval. Uh, we've gotten the resumes in a couple of weeks ago, uh, and I shared them with the board, and I think Olivia said she shared them with the board. Uh, Peter Gillies, if I'm saying that right, for the, for the EAC, and Brian Miller for the Technology and Communication Meeting, or, uh, Committee.
Okay, uh, should we, uh, structure motions individually, or can, okay?
So Peter, Peter Gillies for, uh, EAC. I am, I move that they, uh, that, that he be, uh, considered for the EAC appointed.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Uh, Dennis, what's the status? How, how many, uh, how many members do we have? How many more do we need?
Uh, on, on all the different committees?
One of the ones that was voting on tonight.
For the EAC, there are, there were two vacancies. Just fulfill one of them.
Okay, great. Okay, I have a motion and second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, a couple of questions, all those in favor? I, any opposed? This is five zero. Okay, next, next person, Dennis?
Next person is Brian Miller. I'd like to, uh, move that we appoint him to the Technology Communication Commission.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Uh, Dennis, again, on this particular committee, uh?
This would make four out of seven.
Okay.
We still need people for the, uh, uh, if all four come, I guess that's a quorum, so.
Okay, excellent. Uh, motion second. Any further questions from the board on this? From the public? Seeing none, a couple of questions, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? This is five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any other old business? Okay, let's move on to new business. Anybody having new business?
No, I don't know if this is new business, but there's a work session scheduled for this coming Monday. Is it, are we going to have a work session?
Do we have anything, uh, scheduled?
Not have anything at the moment. Um, typically, what we do is we'll wait till tomorrow, reevaluate, see if anything comes up. And if not, then, uh, Mr. Mr., the chairman and I will discuss, uh, whether to cancel or not.
And I think, I think I heard Mr. Oxley say that, uh, the EDC was not prepared at, at this point. They want to consult with the Planning Commission on some of this before they report.
That's correct.
Great.
Uh, any other new business tonight? Uh, no need for an executive session, Mr. Sanders? Okay. Uh, seeing none, I guess all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, and, uh, without, without further objection, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, everyone.